Buenos dias, Hufidy. The Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination, Historic Preservation Housing, Public Accountability, and the Guam Build Up Public Hearing is called to order. It is currently 9:07 a.m. on January 5, 2024. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on December 28 and January 3, 2024, thus meeting the requirements for open government law. In addition, the notices of this hearing was also posted available on the Guam Legislature's website. Materials for this public hearing were shared in the committee drive and are available upon request. Recording for today's hearing will also be available via the Guam Legislature's YouTube. For sign-in convenience, we have a QR code at the entrance of the door, and for convenience, browser bit.ly backslash R E V Q underscore sign in S I G I A N. Well, unfortunately, there's no other colleagues with me this morning, but we'll go ahead and continue. The purpose of this public hearing is to discuss the receive updated information from the Guam Public Works. This is crucial. This is a crucial discussion that promotes transparency, accountability, and further details so that the public is well informed. I believe that this hearing is an interactive hearing, allowing DPW to engage with constructive discussions and insights on their operation. I appreciate your presence and participation in this hearing and look forward to having a collaborative and productive discussion. Before we start, I'd like to provide some ground rules and conduct of those attending. And the conduct of the hearing shall be as follows. Individuals speaking shall only use respectful and professional language and conduct. Personal interference or the character or motive of any senator or any individual is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal of the hearing or the committee or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of the leadership in Guam and who fails to observe proper decorum according to the 37 Guam Legislature's standing rules. All must abide by the rules of conduct and for quality assurance standards. Before speaking, please introduce yourself, state your name, job title, and organization you are here with. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Let's begin. On the agendas, first item, the updated status on school operations. Safety is always a priority, and we must ensure that our school children have accessible bus shelters to protect them from traffic and weather condition. What is the status with the replacement repairs and expansion of the school bus shelters?
Hi, good morning, Senator. My name is Vince Ariola. I'm the director at the Department of Public Works. Joining me this morning is Linda Abanez, our deputy director. We're very pleased to be here during this informational hearing, and we're very pleased also to provide you with testimony and hopefully answers that'll satisfy the committee. To begin with, on the replacement, repairs, and expansion of school bus shelters, over the last two years, we've replaced over 50 bus shelters with new structures. Today, we have a need for over 30 new structures. Our plan is to bid the construction of these out at an estimated cost of just under $3,000 each. In the past, the 50, they were built in-house. We have a set design for it, and you know, with the workload that we have, we just believe it'll be better if we just bid this out using the same design and materials. If I could just go on, with regard to our bus drivers' overtime and the double sessions, as you know, there's double sessions at JFK, JFK and Simon Sanchez, and then there's also double sessions at Okadu High School and FB Leon Guerrero. Drivers working the double sessions at both these schools are averaging about approximately $40,000 in overtime per pay period, and we are using bus drivers from different satellite stations to make sure that these children are at school on time and at home at the earliest. You had also asked about our Typhoon Mawar recovery efforts. Since the clear majority of the waste and debris at the transfer stations has been handled and disposed of through FEMA and private contractors, presently, we have been tasked to and assist in the disposal of non-eligible wastes such as tires, porcelain, et cetera. At the onset of post-Typhoon recovery, DPW was directly involved in the following projects. We partnered, at the beginning, we partnered with EPA to start and manage the staging sites. We were clearing roadways, addressing flood issues. We assisted mayors as needed. We cleared illegal waste sites. This was one issue that took up a huge majority of our time, was the illegal waste sites. We also provided fuel supply to different agencies, the hospitals, schools, heavy equipment use as well. We provided busing for the homeless, to and from shelters, busing and delivering food commodities to different residents also. We did damage assessments for all the line agencies. We did inspections for weatherhead repairs so the GPA could energize homes and buildings. We did home numbering outreach mapping, just to name a few of the issues we did after Typhoon Mawar. You asked about the status of equipment post-Typhoon Mawar. Because of the amount of debris flooding erosion that occurred during the typhoon, the island's heavy equipment inventory was stretched to its limit, both on the government side and private equipment rentals. For DPW equipment inventory, we are expecting several pieces of new heavy equipment to support our operations. I know I had mentioned this even as far back as well over a year ago. We are just at the cusp of receiving two of them, which are the tractor side cutters. The others, the payloaders, the backhoes, excavators, bulldozers, those are still on order, and we have yet to receive them. You asked also for some statistics on traffic fatalities for this year. This past year, in terms of traffic fatalities, was pretty high. You see the numbers right there. I think 2023 was the highest in the last six years, so we have our work cut out for us and also the drivers as well to drive more safely. Thirteen of the 29 fatalities, 13 were speed-related, three were DUI-related. The remaining 13 cases remain open and under investigation by GPD. You asked if there's any challenges faced in the permit center. The residential building permits has seen a fairly significant drop compared to 2022. You can see the numbers right there. We went from 407 down to 238. While we await the digitization of our overall government building permit process, we are focusing our resources on staff training, certification, and document control. We plan to expand the permit center to build a, it's probably going to be a 600 to 700 square foot building in the back for document storage and for staffing. In terms of our fleet inventory, the government's fleet inventory, you had asked the issue about GovGuam official vehicles and official vehicles not being marked. All vehicles leased and owned by the government of Guam should have agency logos on them as per GCA Title IV. There are vehicles that are exempt from this provision, and those are found in Subsect 1103 and 1103, 1A, B, and C, and D of the same chapter. Our fleet logs shows that there are 162 vehicles in various agencies with private plates that are not marked and are considered exempt. You had asked if there are any procurement impediments that need to be addressed. At this point, there are no procurement impediments. We had been working from the get-go to try to receive procurement authority. We do have procurement authority for construction only, but not for goods and services. We need to beef up our staff and our resources if we're going to shoot for procurement authority for goods and services. We understand that there's been some changes at the local GSA, so we could also wait and see how that improves. We're expecting a pretty decent approval improvement. In terms of prior year obligations, we are addressing the inactive merit bonuses and coordinating with DOA for auditing, processing, and final payment of these prior year obligations. In terms of public notices of road maintenance and construction being posted, we use several ways. We have a mailing list of 600-plus emails. We post on the public notice website. We post also on GTP website, and depending on the size of the construction, we would put notices in the newspaper, both in the Post and online PDN. Just to let you know, we do have some major construction coming up. You'll see the notices coming up. The GPA fuel line construction is slated to start probably within the next 30 days. Public notices will go out, and that's going to go from the top of Baragata, which is by the overpass. Then that's going to come down Route 16 all the way to the intersection of Micronesia Mall and Marine Drive, and then cross Marine Drive to go to Okadu. So that construction is going to install two fuel lines, two separate fuel lines, in the medians in the middle of Route 16. They've looked at construction period anywhere to five to six months, so we're looking at them to start probably in another 30 days. So public notice will come out for there. We're also going to do public notice to the buildings like we did on Route 14 before we did the paving, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that access into and out of all the businesses along Route 16 aren't impeded. The next road construction that we have is probably going to, they've got another, the military has a gas line that they're going to be doing down in Sumai from around the naval station gate to their supply depot over by GSA, so they're going to go through Route 2A there. I don't have the begin date, but again, public notice will go out. Anything that impacts any of our traffic, road encroachments, things like that, we typically require the agency or the contractor to put out public notices. That's all I have. Senator, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Before I go ahead and proceed, I would like to also recognize my colleagues joining me this morning. Thank you, guys, for joining me. Senator Joanne Brown to my left, and then to my immediate right, Senator Chris Barnett.
Good morning, Senator.
Colleagues, Senator Joanne Brown, since you were here before Senator Barnett, I would like to recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly welcome to the deputy and the director of DPW for being here. I know you covered a lot of areas, but there are a couple that I wanted to ask. One in particular that I've been observing is the government vehicles, and of course, DPW is in charge of processing these vehicles when they come into the island and before they're distributed out to the government agencies. And I'm very familiar with this law because I authored it, that required the identification on vehicles, except for those, obviously, that are exempt, such as undercover vehicles for law enforcement and things of that nature. But I've noticed quite a number of government vehicles out on the road that have no identification on them. They have their orange plates, but they're required, they even have a minimum size of signage that has to be on the vehicle so that it can be easily identified from what department or agency that that vehicle is assigned to. And I don't know how they're out on the road, and how do they get issued out of DPW without proper identification on those vehicles?
Again, as I stated, our process, as you know, is if you're exempt, you would have a private plate, but every government of Guam vehicle with the orange plate is supposed to have. I've only seen one, and I'll be honest, I tried to track it. It's a black Toyota 4Runner. I don't know, I was unable to get the license plate so we can track it down, but when this came up, you know, we've worked with our TM division to be as diligent as possible and make sure that everybody that's out there, including mayors, because I understand that they've got a couple also, but I haven't seen it myself. All the mayor's vehicles that I've seen all have a decal identifying them. The only one I've seen is that one, it's a black.
Yeah, I've seen a little more than one. That's why it's kind of raised my eyebrow. How are they issued out? I mean, I'm assuming they're not pulling these decals off the vehicles. I'm assuming that, but I don't know.
I hope not.
But I'm also assuming that before these vehicles are issued out of DPW, if they're not an exempt vehicle, those identifications, I mean, I don't know that it would go down well, but you know, I'm even wondering if we should put trackers on government vehicles so that we don't see abuse, because there is flagrant abuse. Let's not kid ourselves. When I was at DPW, we had trackers put on the vehicle, and we were just dumbfounded to the degree, some of our employees spent their day, you know, cruising around from one place to the other and had nothing related to their work, and then, you know, they just show up right before 4:30, right before it's time to clock out, and all of a sudden, they appear like they've been working all day. And that isn't reflective of everyone, but unfortunately, there are those that take advantage of it. So at least the public, and that was the reason that I had authored that particular legislation, was so that at least that when people, government officials are driving these vehicles, they're mindful that they're an official vehicle and mindful of the department or agency that they're representing, so you're assuming they're going to be responsible. We make those assumptions. Unfortunately, as you know, there's always somebody out there who's not going to want to follow, you know, follow the rules. But I just want to know, how could these vehicles be out on the road? Because I'm actually looking at putting a penalty now, you know, and charge for those that are misusing it, because again, these vehicles do cost our community a lot of money, and then the gas that goes into them. And then for these individuals to be driving around, and we don't know what department or agency to call, especially if they're misusing the vehicle. Who do you call to say, hey, I saw so-and-so, when we don't even know who the vehicle is assigned to, because there's no distinct marking, and these are orange plates that are on the vehicle?
Yes, ma'am. And I recall maybe about a year, year and a half ago, I sent a memo to all the agencies, including judiciary, including this body, reminding them of that. I will do that again. I will, we'll make sure our staff goes out and physically checks these vehicles to make sure that there's a insignia, so to speak, you know? So we just sent one out.
I'm sorry.
Deputy signed it.
Yeah, we just sent out a memo to all the other agencies and judiciary mayors to remind them of our law, the decals, and we are not releasing any of the new vehicles without a logo.
The law is very clear.
Do we keep an inventory? I know this is a challenge, but do we keep an inventory? Who keeps a master inventory of all the listing of GovGuam vehicles and license plates? Does DPW maintain that?
Yes, ma'am.
So if someone called in and saw a violation, and they, for example, they don't have a logo to know, would we be able to call your office and say, we saw license number, blah, 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 and what department is this assigned to?
We frequently get that, Senator, and I'm sure it happened with you, right? Yeah, you know, they're either speeding or weaving in and out of traffic, or parked at infusion.
Well, is there a protocol? I mean, we would know, but for those that don't know, is there a protocol on what you can and cannot use your government vehicle? I mean, like, if you're out on the field during the day and somebody stops by at lunch to get, you know, get lunch, that to me is not an issue. If they want to stop by the store and buy a drink or bottle of water, and they're out on official duty, okay, but when they're there, like I've seen a DPW employee, I was no longer director there, but you know, he's got his official vehicle parked out in front of, you know, Happy Mart, and he's cruising through doing his grocery shopping, you know, come on. That just isn't the kind of representation you want to see, because, you know, I've never had an official vehicle signed to me, and I've run several agencies, and I've never wanted one. But for those that do, if they're using it in their official capacity, then by all means, there's a purpose for that. But we know there's abuse out there, and when we don't see proper recognition of that, or those that are driving these vehicles have any sense of responsibility of how they're using their official, and I understand in some cases, you have the 24 hours, because there's specific reasons for that. Normally, they're emergency responders that have 24-hour vehicles. And of course, our mayors are given that opportunity as well. But is there a protocol so people know what they can and cannot do? Like, you can't take your CHAPMA with you, you know, in your official vehicle, and we've seen that too. At least if I'm going to take my CHAPMA, I'm driving my personal vehicle, okay?
Before a vehicle is.
But I mean, we laugh about it, but that's the reality.
Yeah, yeah, before a vehicle is let out to any employee, whether it's after hours or during hours, they know what the protocol, it's strictly for official business. Now, if you're out in the field and you need to go get lunch at 76, that's fine.
I don't have a problem with that.
Restaurant, yeah, we all understand that, right? But if, you know, your vehicle's at, like I said, I don't want to name a business, because I don't want to damage the business, but you know, it's at a private business that really has no business, then that's a different story, right?
Well, I know it's not on your agenda here, and maybe there's another day we're going to talk about the road issue, but this is something that I've noticed, and constituents have brought this up, especially because we're at this time of the year when it's extra dark at night, and you know, that combined with rain is just, you know, when you're in the road, especially when you can no longer distinguish lanes, and I've noticed that on Route 10 in particular, Harmon, areas of Harmon, I can't, I can't see, you know, we're driving by memory when we're driving down the highway. So are you looking, and these are roads that may, well, I can't say Route 10's in fairly good condition. That road needs to be resurfaced, but for the other roads that are in good condition, that they just simply need remarking, striping, and of course, after the typhoon, we had a number of the signage that went down. I mean, we know where to go, because we live here, but when we have visitors, tourists coming to the island, you know, just like at the Kapua intersection, they want to take the left turn, turning out to Route 4, but there's no left turn, but you know, what signage is telling you that? And the other issue that I've heard complaints about also is the islands, because the islands are almost as dark as the asphalt, that they're not visible. We know the reflectors have a lifespan of maybe five or six years. After that, they have to be popped up and replaced, because there's no longer visibility with regards to the reflectors. So I do commend DPW, because I've seen the road work you guys have done, and certainly very positive, you know, response to that. But these other areas that are highly traveled that do not have the visibility, because the, you know, the paint has already faded, or in many cases, reflectors are no longer serving their purpose, what is the plan on those major roadways to address that for safety? Particularly, the issue of the islands have come up, because people have been running into them, you know, not intentionally, but they just visibly can't see them when they're driving.
I'll have the deputy speak to that.
Okay.
Okay, Senator, so we're addressing task orders. I don't know if you have noticed, we are down at Polaris and heading down to Naval Station. So we were able to work with Hawaiian Rock. They hired a subcontractor, a new one, so that's our pilot program with them. They seem to be executing the striping quickly. So after that, we're heading into Route 10 to address the striping, and then we're heading into the other areas where we do get constituents calling about the striping, so we're addressing that as we go along with our task orders, and they are funded by the local funds, because we are addressing some new mill and pave in Route 10. So we just are using temporary beads, right, white and yellow to factorize the roadways for striping.
Do you have a schedule, though? I mean, I think the last time Main Marine Drive was waterblasted and striped, I was there. The underpass, an overpass that's next to the airport, you know, that was the last round that it was waterblasted, you know, by George Bomba and company and painted. I just, DPW needs to put a schedule in place, and I don't know if you're ahead of me and you already have one, just so that there's regular maintenance on the roadway. We know Federal Highway provides, you know, the millions of dollars to do the construction, but then it gets turned over to the government of Guam, and then that's the end of the story. And I think our people, you know, want to see, especially in these areas, we're simply restriping it. It's not a high-priced item to address just proper safety and maintenance on our roadways.
Yes, with, in terms of the. Director, in terms of the overpass and underpass, we did that a little less than two years ago, and our process was, we wanted to do it every year during the dry season. Last year, unfortunately, we didn't have a dry season. You'll see it done probably between now and March, so hopefully, we get the dry season. And that's been a real big holdup with us in terms of doing painting, maintenance, and especially on the medians. But do we have a process for those high-visibility areas? The underpass is notorious for taking out rims and cars.
Yes.
And you're exactly right. So we did about a year and a half ago. We wanted to do it last year, we just couldn't because of the rain, so it is on schedule for median painting.
And then on the signage, as I mentioned, just driving here and again, and you see areas where the stop signs were taken out by the typhoon, and for those of us that drive here regularly, we know where to stop. Others don't, you know, you're going to wait to be rear-ended, because they just don't see the stop sign, because it's not there anymore. What is your schedule with regards? I know there was a number of them. I know it's a large item.
Eighteen hundred.
A lot of them got taken down and damaged during the typhoon. But what are you guys doing to address the replacement of that? And then also just a signage of, you know, locations and destinations, again, for our visitors that come, so they know what route they're on and where they're going, or where they'd like to go.
So currently, we're replacing what we have in inventory. We submitted in our order for procurement for new installation and signage, right? So we have a small sign shop, we have small inventory, so we're addressing those with our inventory currently. So they started replacing all of the routed roads with stop signages, but we did place our order, and also, we're working with Federal Highway to address the signage issues with new materials and supplies, so we're waiting for that. And then also, we made a claim with FEMA, so everything's in process and order.
And how about for like the villages? I mean, like the little streets that we have here, I mean, has DPW got their listing of where they have to go back and replace, or?
Yes, we do.
And we're working with the mayors, yeah, so a total, like, the last count I saw was a little over eighteen hundred signs that have to be replaced, and that's everything. Yield, speed limits, stop, crossing, everything.
Well, and I hope, Mr. Chairman, certainly for DPW, I know they were not here just a few weeks ago when you had the hearing with regards to the highways, but I hope we can schedule another time specifically to discuss the highway issue, because I'm sure there are a lot of comments and questions we would have with regards to that, but.
Certainly, the agenda was specific to these items because of ongoing legal issues. So because of that, the, because of legal proceedings, they're not to be discussed, but I'll just leave it at whatever was discussed was discussed. Anything further on the agenda? Can we just stick to the agenda until, I am certainly. We're certainly going to have a hearing on this as it goes further, as soon as we can legally do it, and no one's in any liability either way. I certainly do have the concerns from Yamada, Maristo, all the way to Jigo. I understand the concerns. I hear the people's cries for road striping and whatnot, but unfortunately, because of legal and ongoing legal litigation, we just need to be cautious of whatever's being responded to. But I will have a hearing following that, okay? Thank you. Mr. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Senator Canata. I'm sorry, I am aware of the, because it was reported in the media, of the legal issues facing. I'm not sure, is it just the director, is the deputy director able to, because, man, a lot of people are asking about this, striping, and with all due respect to the chair, and since Senator Brown had mentioned some specific areas, Ms. Linda, leaving Jigo around Wustic all the way to the old flea market area, I get a lot of calls about that. It is, not only is that there's no reflectors, striping, it's also very dark because of the streetlights, and just the other night, I dropped my kids up in Jigo, and we had that big rain shower, and I feel like I have pretty good eyesight. I was scared, because it was pouring down, and you're right, it's just very dark. So are you allowed to talk about that?
Yes, so we are addressing that with our engineers. We did an assessment with Hawaiian Rock. You know, unfortunately, Hawaiian Rock's the only player in town. We had a contractor with Federal Highway, but of course, there were some issues that she couldn't address, so we had to go out and put out another bid, but right now, we're addressing it with our IDIQ on our striping on the local funds. So these are all temporary striping, they're not a permanent fix, but yes, that's one of the task orders that we are addressing.
Thank you, because I'm sure you know, right, with the record number of fatalities, I mean, we have seen the statistics, many of them are due to speed or impaired driving, but I just feel as a government, we have an obligation to provide safe streets for people, right? I mean, basic. And I would shudder to think that, and it's, I think it would be common sense to tie at least some of these deaths to the conditions on the roads. I mean, I always say, it's almost like you need hazardous pay to be driving out here on these streets, because it is just very dangerous. I mean, the conditions of the roads themselves, and then when you add on top of that, the way we drive, I mean, as well, I mean, we have to take responsibility for that. On the signs, though, I just wanted to put in to ask specifically, the, right out here on the road in between the legislature and the museum, there's that one-way sign that was there, and so cars keep coming up this road, and you know. and, you know, we have a lot of traffic at Skinner Plaza with the lights and the Thursday Night Market. And so I've seen a bunch of times cars coming up, and I'm just, you know, if we could, uh, in the process, yeah.
Yes, actually, I, I, uh, received a call from your sergeant-at-arms about that. Yeah, we just, we don't, we don't have one in the inventory, but it's, it's, it's in order, and, and as soon as we get one, um, it'll be up.
Thank you, Vince. Uh, and then onto the, the, I just wanted to ask about the bus drivers, um, overtime. Just for clarification, it says here you're averaging approximately forty thousand overtime per pay period. Is this paid by DPW or GDOE?
I, I was just going to mention that. I actually had it in my testimony, then I, I kind of lined it out. But, uh, it is being paid by, 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 uh, by DPW. My position is, you know, the double sessions weren't caused by DPW. I've got to work with, with DOE and, and see if they've got the funding to reimburse us. And, and the way I see it, I think they should. Uh, so, you know, it's a matter of working with them and, uh, seeing if we can, uh, get reimbursement from, from DOE.
You know, we had a oversight hearing with the Guam Department of Education, uh, last year, and we had discussed, uh, capacity, right? And so, um, as you're aware, the double sessions, the alternating school schedules, uh, the cohorts have created this, uh, I mean, it's a mess, right? And the bus drivers are really struggling to, because there's multiple drop-off pickup times occurring at the, the same time. So what I had asked the superintendent was, um, as we start to see schools inspected, passed, reopened, or repaired for whatever reason, it's going to create more routes. And so what is the capacity of the Department of Public Works, specifically with bus operations, uh, to meet those needs? Because, you know, DOE is saying that, uh, we can't stop doing that or we can't open up another campus because of the challenges that Bus Ops is facing and the shortages.
And, and that's what we've been doing to, 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 um, to handle the load, to handle the, um, the, the double sessions. We've had to augment the, the school bus drivers from not just the, the Tumuning, the Harmon, and the, and the Jigo substations. We've had to bring in the, the buses from Baragara and sometimes Jonya, as far back as Jonya, just to make sure the kids, uh, get to school on time and get home. The, the, the real concerning one there is, is the afternoon session. Afternoon session gets out at five. And right now, the, the earliest that the, the last child gets home is at seven, and we're really trying to bring that down shorter. That, it's, it's a tough situation we're in. And, and, you know, once they get out at five, the traffic in that area is, it, it's at a sandhill. But, uh, you know, we, uh, we've, we've tried at least to, to, to work the lights just so that they can get out of JFK and get on to, get on to Marine Drive. There's probably, gosh, I, I don't have the number, but there's probably fifteen buses coming out of General, probably twenty buses coming out of JFK at five o'clock.
What's, what's worse, the traffic coming out of JFK at five or the traffic coming out of Ukadu at six fifteen?
Uh, JFK.
JFK, okay. And then, so again, just going back to what the superintendent said, so specifically with Simon Sanchez, right? We know that we're awaiting the groundbreaking and the construction of the new campus. So I'd ask the soup, uh, are we to assume that for the duration of, of that, from, you know, now until when we, we open the doors at Sanchez, that they're going to be double sessioning at JFK, right?
Yes.
And so his response was, he doesn't know because, again, they have to, to kind of look at your capacity and the number of drivers you have and the ability to, um... And so that's why I ask about how you're improving it. Can you give a status? I mentioned, uh, or talked with Dave De La Sola about, uh, the bus driver boot camp, and he had said that there were some bus drivers who were a little bit short on, uh, whatever was required for them to be fully certified and join the fleet?
Yeah, Linda's-
So this is our third cycle for the boot camp. We picked up eleven from the original first, um, and second boot camp, and then we just have a continuous announcement with school bus drivers. So we recently just picked up eight. So we're trying to, um, increase our manpower capacity, but at the same time, um, we're seeing a mass exodus with retirement, um, for the school bus drivers. So it's, it's a balancing act, right? And so what we're also doing is we included our supervisors and leaders. We got them to, um, pick up the slack for the regular bus drivers. So, um, they're able to drive, to help, um, with the double session. And so that's why our manpower overtime increased because the leaders and supervisors are also, um, put behind the wheel to make sure that the kids are, um, transported on a timely manner. But, so we are, um, continuing our boot camp. We are continuing, um, hiring on the school bus drivers. It's a continuous announcement.
Okay, and that's at, uh, on your website?
Yes.
Okay, go, go get a job, guys. Go apply to be a bus driver. It's a great, uh, job. Yeah, because I just, when I look at this forty thousand per pay period, I mean, obviously, fiscally, it's not very sustainable, but, uh, even more than that, I just think about the bus drivers. I know they're working hard, they're stretched thin, and I just feel for them, and I commend them for their service. And also, um, the GDOE had come out of the release, and I, I wasn't sure if they had recognized DPW because of the incident at GW where there was a report of, uh, I believe it was an airsoft gun, and the staff at GW searched the bus and find anything, and then the bus went back to the bus depot. And it was a heads-up play from, uh, the bus drivers and your employees at that bus depot, where they searched the bus, lifted the seats, and they're able to find that airsoft gun. So I just wanted to commend on the record, uh, the Bus Operations Division for, for their hard work. I mean, it's very challenging with these, uh, double sessions. You're right, it's not of DPW's making, but, uh, again, it's an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing, so I appreciate that. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. So I share the concerns of Senator Brown. I'm thankful that she's the one that drafted the legislation for decals. So I'm kind of in a position where maybe we need to put a policy in order to maybe make vehicles look like police cars. That fifty percent of the vehicle needs to be marked with a decal because it seems to me that certain agencies or certain management positions are abusing the official vehicle. So maybe what we need to do is make eighty percent of the door be a government, uh, decal. You know, like GPD or the port, oh, um, back to the foreigner. I did request from, uh, I forgot her name at your office, and she told me that the vehicle was an undercover, uh, vehicle. That's why it was in decal. But doesn't make sense to me. Why would you put an undercover vehicle with a government plate? Because now I know it's an undercover vehicle. But nonetheless, so do we think that we should, or do you support policy to, I guess, make decals like fifty percent bigger? Or should we make like the decal be two-door spanning? Or, I don't know.
Senator, I'm, yeah, as, as I'm listening to you and Senator Brown, of course, you know, the first thing that comes to mind, allow, allow our, our department to do an audit of, of, of the, the government vehicles that are out there specifically, what they're used for, who's got them, uh, and their purpose, just, just to ensure compliance. Uh, so if we, you know, if we can do an operational audit of, of the, what did I say, about a hundred sixty-two vehicles out there? Where are they? What are they being used for? Uh, what are the, what's being leased? What's with private plates? Uh, until I know what, where we're dealing with, uh, then I can come to you and say, um, maybe you're right, trackers is the way to go. I know a lot of the, uh, uh, the telecoms, they all use trackers. And, and boy, that, that, you want to talk about, you know, and the, bringing the, the, the gas bill down? Oh, yeah, instant. So allow me to do a, an operational audit of what we have out there, the government, and then, uh, we'll, we'll see what the findings are.
Thank you so much, Director. Also, with that audit, if you could include, um, I guess, look into disciplinary actions for the vehicle's use? I don't think we have any disciplinary actions for it right now. Or if you can, let me know if there's any right now?
I, I, there, there might be something in, in statute, uh, misuse of government, uh, resources or something like that, right? And, and you, and we can also, depending what the, the severity or the type of, uh, of misuse, you know, it, it could go to civil service as well.
Okay. Okay, um... He already covered the toy gun. So alongside with the toy gun being, or the BB gun being found in the bus, I wanted to ask, do you think we should have CCTVs in the bus? Um, you know, I, I only say this because I know we purchased like twenty buses la, like, before COVID, and unfortunately, I don't know, again, what is up with these children these days? They think it's funny to cut the back of the, the, you know, chairs, and then they start shoving junk and spit into the frickin' back of the seat. And, you know, it's just unsanitary and gross. I don't understand. But do you think, because of that vandalism, do you think we should have CCTVs in the bus? Um, I think in a dual, dual-supporting role, right? That it's protecting the bus driver, um, from being misinterpreted in claims or whatnot, right? We could say that a bus driver is abusing a student, yelled at a student inappropriately, or whatnot, right? Upon transport, or the, the bus was, I don't know, right? So I, I just think that, I don't know what you guys', um, thoughts are on that? If I could get some of that feedback for me today?
I, I, I don't have any, any, um, objection to something like that. CCTV cameras are being used, um, more often than not nowadays, and I, I have absolutely no, no issue with that.
Also, like, in the event, like, there's an accident, right? Maybe you should have a front-facing camera in the busing so that it also marks that in the event that there's a vehicle that is on collision of the bus, right? And I, I mean, it happens unfortunately, right? But, um, what is it? Is it a brake issue, right? Then that can actually help as a defense for the government of Guam as well, right? But I know that you guys are responsible for releasing any government vehicles. How about ambulances and GPD officials? You guys release that, too?
Yes, sir.
So I think we've also seen unfortunate circumstances with people, again, who just have disregard for life and safety. I don't understand how certain drivers out there are not meeting or yielding to ambulance or lifesaving, um, uh, emergency vehicles, right? AMT has, um, usually dialysis patients, and for whatever reason, just this morning, six cars don't want to move right. And, you know, it's, it's all fun and games, I think, to some drivers out there until it's their own loved one that unfortunately didn't make it in time to the, to emergency service or lifesaving, right? So I, I wanted to also bring that up into the light that maybe, um, I don't know what the protocol is, right? For GPD to write citations for those vehicles that are obviously not yielding to, whether it be a red government ambulance or an AMT, ALS, um, private company. But, um, it, it just seems to me that people are really having zero, um, regard for life right now. And I think we need to have some more, um, teeth in that perspective. And I think if we can literally video the individual not yielding and giving zero concern about the life being, you know, protected, right? So I, I just wanted to know if that's something you guys would support? Because I think it can automate the citation, and then the judge's job will be easier. And if person didn't yield for whatever reason, whether they're listening to rock and roll all night long on the road, and then they just have zero regard for even flashing lights. I've seen it even during the evening. There, people, I don't know, the driving, I don't know if you have that driving course with emergency vehicles, too?
And I, Senator, I've, I've been on record already, uh, and that, that's, it's just not my lane. But, but I've, I've been on record about the, the, the new drivers that are coming out. I've, I've, I've been on record that Guam just does, does not have smart drivers. Uh, and I think we need to take a look at that, uh, where are these drivers coming from? Who's teaching these drivers, you know? Who's regulating, i.e., the driver's schools? Uh, I know they come, they, 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 they're, they might, they come out of revenue tax or something. I'm, I'm not specific to that. All I know is that to get a license, you got to go through a certain driving school, and look at the drivers we have today. It's, it's, uh, it needs to be looked at, yeah.
Okay, thank you. In regards to bus shelters, um, it's been brought to my attention that certain bus shelters are encroaching on private property. Do you, do you have any of those issues ongoing at this time?
Norm, uh, we, we've had one that was in Tumuning, and we had to move that. Uh, but normally, if it's on, uh, private property, they'll, they'll let us know. But for the most part, we're, we're typically in government easements.
Okay.
And we, and we make sure that before we put any new bus shelters down. It's, it's definitely on a government easement. And we work with the mayor.
For new developments, do you suggest that we should have, um, you know, how they have, um, the tie-ins for government, um, like sewer or power-water infrastructure? Do you think some certain developments should be pushing for like every ten units, right? They should have a bus shelter in their development? Do you think that's a good policy idea? Like forfeit ten, ten by ten?
It, it would make for uniformity perhaps, or, um, aesthetics, you know? If, if you open up a twenty or thirty housing subdivision and you want, you know, you have nice sidewalks, nice driveways, and just to match the whole, um, subdivision, something like that, I, I wouldn't be averse to.
Okay, thank you. Um, another one was the bus shelters, um, are, is there any mobile bus shelter? Because, you know, certain generations don't have kids.
Exactly.
Right? So I'm not saying that, um, the whole village of Zotnia doesn't have kids or Jigo's not going to have a whole kid, right? But, so can we move like bus shelters? Because I know certain bus shelters, especially the ones like with the laddie stone column in the middle, do those have, um, the ability to be transferred? Because they have like the-
They're not, yeah.
No?
And anything, the old, uh, concrete bus shelters are, are not made to be moved. So you'll see a lot of those that are, they're, you're right. The children grew up, and there's no more children in the neighborhood, and so you have a bus stop that's unused. So that's why we went to the, uh, with, uh, the, the treated, uh, wood, the cement board, uh, bus, buses, because those can be moved with a forklift, and they're just placed on concrete slabs. Uh, and they're movable, they don't, they don't get damaged when you move them. Uh, these concrete ones that are out there, as soon as you move them, they crack and, and they, they become unsafe.
I would also like to recognize my colleague Senator Talatidevi for joining us this morning. But before we move on to, we'll have her some time. I know it's not your agency, but, you know, once upon a time, when I was growing up, we had yellow lights. Now we have white streetlights. And my understanding is that they're LED lights?
Yes, sir.
So would you guys support solar lights? Because, uh, Governor Cargutares found a solution apparently to put solar lights, and now, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to see how the statistics come out of it, right? But certainly, I think it's a great idea that we can cut the cost by having solar lights, you know, all over the streets. I know that we had some legal issues with the road discussion, but I know that streetlights are GPA's issue. But would you guys support solar lights?
Sure.
Because I, I, you know, I know you guys have certain concerns in the village community. You have your own, uh, protocol, right? That the mayor's advise you what street needs a street light, and then it goes to GPA management, and then GPA management discusses whether or not it's engineerable or whatnot, for whatever reason.
I, I think the only thing to, to worry about with solar lights is going to be the battery pack. And the ones down in Tumun, I understand a battery pack is about, yeah, maybe about three feet high and about, uh, the diameter is like maybe three, if not four inches. And it, it's fairly heavy. So the, the, the pole itself has to be able to, to, to carry that, so. And, and I'm sure there's, there's different, there's different types of, of battery packs and solar lights. So, uh, is it something that, that we would support? Of course, yeah. Certainly lower down our power bill. I could tell you right now, the LEDs, uh, that are, that are out there and have been newly installed are, uh, we're, we're seeing savings, uh, from the, uh, the old lights of, of before.
Yeah, so that, that was one of my reasons, right? Is, uh, once upon a time, there was a press release that the yellow lights eat like ten light, ta, eat ten, ten watts of energy to every, uh, LED light. So my understanding is if we're saving that much money, then put a frickin' streetlight on every power pole.
Then that's what we've been doing. So we've, we've, I don't have the numbers with me.
I mean, not you, GPA, but.
Yeah, but we've, we've seen a huge increase in, in streetlight, uh, installation simply because of the savings that, that, that we've, uh, we've been achieving, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think, doesn't DPW still pay the, the GPA for the? It's paid out of their agency budget. They're the ones that pay for the, the bill for the streetlights for the government block.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, at this time, I'll go ahead and recognize Senator Talatidevi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to you. I apologize for being a little late here. However, I was watching online, you try to multitask thanks to technology, keeping you informed. I, I did, I know that you did talk about, you know, the, the lights, this, you were talking about the streetlights. It wasn't on the agenda. And I did have some other questions that were not on the agenda, but I also heard that you, there may be another hearing that you're going to schedule.
Correct.
So we can talk about, you know, the things I'd like to see, talk about is retention, number one. Retirement that's coming up, the, you know, the exodus that's going out of DPW. A lot of people are retiring, and how are you going to fulfill that? Senator Brown, of course, mentioned about the, the titling of the vehicles to ensure, you know where that's from. And I'm, I'm looking forward to being a co-sponsor in that legislation because I think we need teeth to it. And I, I too am finding out there are vehicles out there that are not marked on what agency, so that's important. However, I most especially want to find out why you didn't attend the last public care, uh, public oversight that we had for DPW and who your attorney is, who your true attorney is. So I'd like to talk about that. Also, you mentioned here, since, we'll, we'll go back on subject here, there are challenges facing the permit center. You're seeing a decline in these permits. And what do you attribute to that? I mean, you say there is a decline, but what do you think this, what's going on? Is it the lack of inspectors? Because if you look at the inspectors that you have in your building, especially on commercial building inspection, if, if I'm not mistaken, are there two segments? One for building inspection and one to see the process of the building of, of a construction site?
Some of them multitask. But the biggest issue that, that we've seen in terms of, of housing on Guam, housing construction, resident, residential construction, are interest rates.
Is what? I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
Interest rates are, are just too high to, to, to build a house. And, and all the Realtors will tell you that. I don't know if the banks will tell you that, but the cost of construction is high, cost of materials is high, cost of labor, and, and interest rates. And, and there's the big difference between a six percent interest rate and the interest rate that say we had seven, eight years ago, three percent, huge difference.
Okay, thank you for that. Because, you know, everyone's saying that we're not doing enough to encourage more housing on this island when it's really not us. We've got the property, we've got the means to do it. But as far as, you know, laws that would allow or expedite or anything like that, building a home, but it's really not us. It's just the financial situation we are in today that's causing this delay. Going to the merit bonuses, as you mentioned, okay? And, and you're saying that you're, you're looking through it? But do you have the funding to pay those merit bonuses? Are they standing by? Can you explain that? Is the money there ready to go to pay them out?
So we are currently paying our active employees merit bonus going all the way back to 2012. Now we're addressing that inactive, which inactive is either the retired, they passed on, or they moved on to another agency. So we have the list from DOA. DOA is auditing to make sure the payout is correct. Once we get that green light, then we would process the GG1. And these are all for inactive employees.
Can you tell me how far along that is? I mean, what are you looking at finally getting that?
Twenty twelve. We, we went back as 2012.
No, I'm talking about for DOE to do their job and, and you know.
Oh, just recently, we're working, because we're not the only agency that they have to audit. So they're really.
Did they give you a timeline?
Um, I can check, I can follow up. But I know that they've been really working hard on it and providing the information to us.
Yeah, could you please let us know what they're, what they're telling you the timeline would be for that? You know, and so what you're telling us right now is that all those active employees right now is up to date on their merit bonuses?
Correct.
Okay, they're all been paid out? Okay, so we're just looking at prior to 2012?
Yes.
And those who passed away?
Those are inactive.
You, you really should ask them for a timeline, you know? For agencies to tell you guys when, when you're all raring to go, it, it makes you look bad, like you're not doing your job. When the reality is, it's, you're the other agency that's delaying it, you know? And, and you, you need to be on top of them, and you need to give a timeline. I want a timeline. Just don't tell me, oh, we're still working on, no, give me a timeline. And then when they don't reach that, you go again. Third strike, you come here and we'll do something about it, okay? But we, we need to work toward that. I know you don't have anything here on, but I, I have to ask, Mr. Chair. I mean, because we're seeing an exodus at DPW, a lot of people retiring. And what, what are you doing to recruit? Because there's a lot of vacant positions in the staffing pattern, quite a bit.
Our, our, Senator, our, our biggest issue that I, I've said every year I, I come here is, is in the, the professional area, the technical area. The inspectors, we've been able to, we've been able to fill those positions. We're comfortable with those positions, but it's really the engineers that, that we need. And we, we, I don't think we've hired an engineer in maybe over a year. And we've got engineers in our CIP department. You know, we are, we are doing, we have about forty-five construction projects going on in line agencies. And, and we've got four engineers who are handling the.
How many inspectors do you have?
I'm sorry?
How many inspectors do you have?
Inspectors from permits?
Not just permit. I'm talking about those who are going out inspecting the construction.
On the CIP, it's the same guys, there's five of them.
There's five of them? I only see one on your staffing pattern.
That's construction inspectors, we have building inspectors.
Oh, I'm sorry, say it again?
Construction inspector and building inspectors. We have a combination of five, and they do multitask, like the director said. So we have them on board.
Okay, so one person does, okay, but still that's.
Ev, ev, everyone is hiring engineers today. As, they're not even graduating from UOG and they already have a job.
Okay, so it's not your inspectors, it's the engineers?
Engineers.
Okay, and how many of your engineers are retiring soon?
That's, that, they're, they're not ready to retire, but they're very close. So we are, we are working on that.
You're on the cusp of it.
Yes.
Does, does, are you allowed to have them retire and then rehire them on a, on a contract basis? Or you know how people are double-dipping, you know, and stuff? Is your agency allowed to do that?
I don't believe so.
With people who have retired and then rehire them back?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
I mean, there's only certain exempt positions that we actually put in the budget, nurses, doctors, I mean, schoolteachers. There's a list, I, I don't know that.
Certain lists have been added, but.
Right. Especially to come back on contract, that would kind of be like going around the, the process, but.
Okay, so it would basically be rehired, so you have no exemption to, okay. Okay, well, that's something that really needs to be looked at. You're going to be losing some people here, and a lot of people are going to be retiring. And we'd hate to see those vacancies and then people complaining that DPW's not doing their job, you know, so.
We're very busy, Senator.
I know you are. And that's why I'm concerned about this, especially the employment of, of DP, of your employees. Okay, thank you. And overworking them, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I don't have anything else further for you guys. My office is ready to support in any way. I think we'll have some legislation drafted after this hearing to respond to certain items that we brought right into the light. So without further ado, if there are no further discussions, the committee appreciates your participation in today's hearing. I recommend you all for your participation today. I want to say that your participation in is, is critical to keeping the public well-informed for the Department of, Department of Public Works daily operations. My office is always open if there are any, if there is any help needed for your agency. It is currently ten oh three AM. This concludes public hearing for today at ten oh three AM. We are adjourned. Sidus Massey, a happy new year and God bless.